Good evening, everyone. Do we have Alder Person Schmidt?
Oh, there he is.
Thank you. Call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM in council chambers. There's no remote electronic attendance, so we move to our vote of office. Promotional appointment of Engineer Corey Heston to Lieutenant effective June 18, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Members of Council.
Corey, thank you.
One very rewarding part of my job is to stand up here and recognize those individuals who have worked so hard day in and day out for the city and our department, and then ultimately be rewarded for their efforts with a promotion. Tonight is even more rewarding because Corey Heston is not just hardworking, dedicated, and loyal to the mission of the Moline Fire Department, he is also just a genuinely good person who cares about the people he is helping and someone we are proud to see advancing within the fire service. A little quick history on Corey. He graduated from Pleasant Valley High School in 2000. After graduation, he immediately enlisted in the United States Marine Corps, where he spent six years, with nearly two of those years serving in deployment in Iraq during Operation Iraqi Freedom. After serving in the Marine Corps, Corey began his training as a paramedic and was eventually hired by the Moline Fire Department in 2008. Since joining the department, Lieutenant Heston has worked as a firefighter, paramedic, and as an engineer while also being certified as a fire investigator. Lieutenant Heston is being joined here tonight by his wife Lisa and son Gage, as well as his very proud mother and his niece. Mayor, if you'd like to join us at the podium and give Corey his vote of office.
This is for you. This one's for me. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Corey Heston.
I, Corey Heston.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of Lieutenant.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of Lieutenant.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
For the Fire Department of the City of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the City of Moline.
And the City of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Lieutenant.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Lieutenant.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Of the Fire Department of the City of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
If I could get Corey's son, Gage, up here to help him. Congratulations, Senator.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You deserve it.
Congratulations. Okay, we move to our next item, 4.1, a proclamation from Keep Moline Beautiful Commission to declare the month of July 2023 as Plastic-Free July. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas, the Keep Moline Beautiful Commission is requesting that the City of Moline be a part of a global movement from the Plastic-Free Foundation; and whereas, this encourages people to be a part of a solution to plastic pollution so we can have cleaner streets, rivers, and more beautiful neighborhoods and parks; and whereas, this movement has inspired millions of participants in 190 countries across our planet and has shown the world that small changes will collectively make a massive difference to our communities; and whereas, we are all stewards of a cleaner environment upon which future generations depend; and whereas, each resident of our city and neighboring communities are asked to think about how much unnecessary plastic they experience in their daily routine and make efforts to reduce what they can, especially reducing the use of plastic bottles and plastic bags in the month of July and beyond. Now therefore, I, Sangeetha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2023 as Plastic-Free July." And if you recall, I mentioned this a few weeks ago, the Environmental Working Group is working with Tori to highlight different ways we can try to do Plastic-Free July. So if you're interested in being a part of a video or a picture story of some sort to show how you might be doing that in your own home, in your own life, please let us know. We'll take it from there. Okay? So that is that. Next up is a presentation from our Police Department, accreditation, Chief Galt and Mr. Vitas.
I think you're going to need to use a microphone, so.
Except.
Yeah, for the recording.
It's recorded, so we'll stand with you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. What a privilege. What a privilege to be here in Moline today to recognize the Moline Police Department, its chief, its deputy chiefs, its commanders, its executive team, and all the officers for all the hard work they do in Moline, and most importantly, on this occasion, to be recognized as an accredited police department in the state of Illinois. And I have spent decades working with many different police departments, and it always gave me a great pleasure when someone took charge and ran with the ball and took the time to become literally a top-shelf department. And that accreditation is just that. It recognizes Moline and its police department as being one of the best in the state of Illinois, and for that matter, in the nation. So I'm going to read something here that only the chief gets to present because of his role with the Illinois Chief Police Association. And here we go. Says, "The Moline Police Department has achieved statewide accreditation through the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. What does accreditation mean? The Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police has determined that the Moline Police Department meets the highest level of service delivery through best practices and procedures. Compliance with these standards has been verified by an independent authority, the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Council." And they were great gentlemen. I mean, they really did a great job. The standards. The standards are divided into four general subject areas: administration, operations, personnel, and training. Tier one has 69 standards to meet. Tier two has 181 standards to meet. No simple task. Tier two has rigorous review of tier one and additional standards in engagement initiatives, anti-bias policing, and extra layers of protection to delivered services. Moline has achieved accreditation in all 181 standards." Kudos to the Police Department. This is quite the achievement that takes hundreds of man-hours, significant investment in time, and resources, and meticulous, sometimes painstaking, review of policies and procedures. Chief Darren Galt should be proud of this accomplishment. Chief Galt's leadership was critical in reaching this monumental achievement for this agency and your community here in Moline. Accreditation is critical in modern policing to verify practices, boost the public trust of law enforcement, and reduce municipal liability. Most of all, the elected officials and citizens who are served by the Moline Police Department should be very proud. You can be assured that Moline is policing your community in accordance with the best practices and modern policing standards. The Moline Police Department is in a class above the rest in Illinois, joining only 50 other agencies that have elected to undergo strict procedural scrutiny, formal policy review, and onsite assessment. Congratulations. And with that, Mayor.
Yes. So the plaque recognition reads, "Moline Police Department." The Illinois Accreditation Council verifies that the Moline Police Department has policies, procedures, and daily routines that achieve the tier-one level of Illinois accreditation. This signifies that the department is in compliance with the professional standards of modern law enforcement. Accredited March 30, 2023. Darren Galt, Chief of Police. Todd Ngo, Deputy Chief. Summer O'Leary, Executive Coordinator. Lieutenant Jeremy Weeks, Accreditation Standards. Congratulations, and thank you so much for this.
I just want to recognize the team that spent countless hours and listened to my complaining about the timeline and trying to get this done in accordance with the city's strategic plan, and they did a phenomenal job. A lot of hours. This plaque doesn't signify the blood, sweat, and tears that the three team members really poured into this, rewriting policies. It was a big, big undertaking. We started this in 2019, took a little break during 2020 because of the COVID and everything that we were dealing with, and then finally achieved it here late last year and then got our assessment done. We'll continue to move on now to the next Tier Two standards, which are a little bit more intense, but we're very proud of this. And again, I have to thank the team. We had subcommittees that worked on policies and pulled them back up, proofs that we had to supply. And I also want to thank you for allowing us to procure software and fund the program as well, which was certainly a budgetary cost to us. So thank you very much. Thank you to the team. I really appreciate the hard work, and thank you very much for that honor.
Yeah, sure, we could. Well, Mayor and Steve.
Yes, Steve.
I think. Yeah.
Father Mary.
Mr. Potter. You've got three minutes.
Good evening. Dick Potter. I'm a member of the Moline Historic Preservation Commission. First of all, I see some new faces here. I want to congratulate you on your election, and thank you very much for your public service. It's really important to how we conduct business and life here in Moline. I'm here on behalf of a matter that was brought before this board. The last time was April 25th, before some of you were here. This is a matter that the Historic Preservation Commission diligently wants as a tool in our toolbox to promote historic preservation and operate within the city. I've just been informed this evening earlier by the mayor that this now is moving forward, and I would hope that this matter will come back before the council. The Historic Preservation Commission will be more than happy to come and speak with you when this matter comes back. I think that's just about it.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Potter. Any further public comment? Oh, yes, we have one. The clerk will read.
All right. This is from Porter McNeil. He says, "To the mayor and members of Moline City Council, as someone who grew up and now lives in the northeast section of Moline, I support the proposed East Gate TIF. This region meets the legal requirements to become a TIF based on factors of economic decline and conservation. And as was expressed by several people at last night's open house, this area has been long overlooked and in need of new energy. Combined with the timely completion of the I-92 corridor project, the TIF will help spur improvements needed to energize the gateway to Moline. The TIF will lift the residential property values of the region. These actions will also help complete part of the vision we talked about during the years we advocated in Springfield for funds to build the new Western Illinois University Quad Cities Riverfront campus. We talked then of a barbell economic development strategy that would eventually connect a revitalized downtown to WIUQC and farther east to Moline/east Moline border and the revitalized East Moline Riverfront. Passage of this TIF is a positive first step towards that blueprint. Since joining the county board in July 2021, I've had productive conversations with the City of Moline Department of Community and Economic Development, City Administrator Bob Vitas, Alderman Pat O'Brien, and others about ways to help improve this part of Moline. I want to thank them all and urge the mayor and city council to flash a green light to this new TIF. Thank you very much. Sincerely, Porter McNeil."
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment. At this time, are there any questions on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move to our committee of the whole agenda items. 8.1 is an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Administration, Article Four, Boards and Commissions, Division Two, Moline Commission on Youth, Section Two dash 4201 Ex officio members. Need a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Alder Person O'Brien. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Timian. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I noticed that we found a path forward on updating the ordinance that did not address kind of one of the original questions. I'm curious, Margaret, if we know, the original language had ceded some of that authority to the bodies to set their own? Did we determine that we don't have the authority to do that?
Set their own what?
Their own attendance requirements.
That's not the item we're on right now.
Yeah, that's a different item.
That's 8.2.
Yeah.
I apologize.
It's okay. Thank you. No problem. Any other questions? We're clear this is a bit of cleanup language. Yeah. All right. So hearing nothing else, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. All right, 8.2, Chapter Two, Administration, Amendments, Access of Absenteeism. Ms. Christopoulos.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So this actually, Alder Person Schmidt, is the ordinance that revises our current attendance policy by clarifying, first of all, what the actual attendance policy is, or I should say requirement. And that would be, as it states, four absences in a 12-month period for those boards and commissions that meet 12 times a year. We doubled that for planning commission because they do meet quite a bit more. They meet 22 times. So actually, we appreciate that they raised this initially and brought to our attention that we really should make this more proportional. So in answer to your question, the current ordinance language does reference bylaws. And you had raised the question in the past about what that balance is. And we did talk at that time about how ordinance, you know, code language always supersedes bylaws, but our code language was not quite clear. And, you know, I believe you even asked us, well, what is that authority then? And generally, the authority, bylaws would supersede if they're more restrictive as opposed to less restrictive. We felt in reviewing this that we really should just eliminate reference to bylaws to avoid future confusion.
Motion to approve.
All right. That's first by Alder Man Schmidt, second by Alder Person Timian. Discussion? I appreciate the explanation and the cleanup and the attention to all of the boards and commissions to be efficient.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Now we move to our string of informationals. 9.1, Special Events, Street Closures. Mr. Deichhausen and Chief Galt.
Your Honor, thank you, Members of Council. I think the point of tonight's agenda item is to introduce you to some of the challenges and complexities there are to host or accommodate an event in a public street, whether it be a parade, a block party, a car show, and some of the challenges that staff has had, reconciling the public's desire to be out and about on a beautiful summer evening, reconciling that with public safety best practices. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Galt. He has a presentation, and we also have members of the Special Events Committee here tonight to kind of get this out, get some of these challenges out there, and get some feedback from you all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. So I'd just like to be transparent here, start off with a little disclaimer. I am the fun police, so this is from a public safety perspective. We also have, as Barry said, several people here from the Special Events Committee to back up any questions that you might have. I may not be able to answer. But I volunteer to kind of lead this discussion and give you a little bit of background on the Special Events Committee so that you can understand the process and then also your role in special events. So to just give you a quick background, the City of Moline has an ordinance and a special events policy that delegates a lot of this responsibility to a special events committee. And I won't go through the whole policy in several pages, but in general, we're talking about any use of city streets, parking lots, or any time city staff support is needed, which would require a permit. There are a couple different tiers, but generally, we're going to be talking about moderate to major events, greater than 500 people. The Special Events Committee is made up of over 20 members. That includes several city staff personnel from almost every city department, including police, fire, public works, risk management, et cetera, but as well as our partners in the community like MetroLink, Moline Center, Renew Moline, Visit Quad Cities, and the vibrant arena. They have reviewed over 20 events in 2022. There's an application that's submitted to this committee. They review it, discuss it. They sometimes have the applicant come to the meeting to present their plans, get input from all of the stakeholders that I just mentioned on the committee, eventually work through approval processes, and then give it back to the event organizers to execute the plan. Let's talk quickly about parade routes, and I have a lot of slides here, I'm kind of going to go through them fairly quickly. But from my perspective as the police chief, this is very difficult because we want the city to be fun, we want to have these events, we want to be a vibrant community, but with that comes a lot of public safety risk. And unfortunately, you only have to turn the newspaper or the TV on to see all of these issues, that parades particularly are now what we call soft targets. They are targets for a vehicle-borne attack or an accidental vehicle driving through and killing people. Waukesha, Wisconsin, not very far away, was that victim in a Christmas parade. So we're looking at safety, we're looking at routes that we have a very challenging downtown with long routes that potentially cross railroads, I-DOT routes, state routes. We have major arterial roads like River Drive, the oneways I could mention, as well as 15th, 16th, different streets that go north and south. We also have very serious challenges with police and fire manning these events. We have to have a realism that we are a big city in our minds, but we're really not a big city in our support, right? The staffing and the resources that we have available. Many large departments like Chicago, you go to some of these major events, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, a lot of those people, that's their job to staff events. That is their day job as they go to Cubs games and Bears games and special events. That's their division. Here, we do it with overtime, manning them with the Fire Department and EMS services. And then we require a lot of these events to have volunteers. And we've had issues where at the last minute, these events have called up and said, "We can't staff it. We don't have enough volunteers to execute the plan." It's a problem. Barricades. The city requires events to provide their own contract with barricades, and that has been a problem in the past. We do, the public works, I think, throughout here tonight, doesn't have the staff or the barricade supply in-house to execute that. And then we run into day of execution, where the event organizers don't necessarily put on a good event. We don't really have a lot of parades. So last year in 2022, we had the Unity Pride Parade, nine officers worked, the Moline Homecoming Parade, 13 officers worked, and the Dia de los Muertos Parade, the Mercado, October 22nd, we only had four officers work. We had a lot of issues with that parade, and I think partly because we were, both the organizers and the police department were overwhelmed, had no idea it was going to be that big. So we had multiple issues with route staffing, the size, and volunteers. So the parade requirements, we have to have a designated staging area. A parade organizer must conduct a walkthrough with the Police Department. We can't have last-minute changes, better communication expectations. Have to provide an adequate number of barricades and volunteers. We need to talk about maybe having a vendor or vetting vendors for the barricades. Volunteers at the barricades must be at their post a half hour prior to the start of the event so that we can get it going, and the execution of the plan for the prior year must be a consideration on the future approval of an application. Right? If people are continuing to put on an event that isn't going well, the committee needs to be empowered to be able to address that. Public safety limitations, staffing is a major issue for us. As you know, we struggle with our regular full-time staff, but today's workforce, and I know you guys are all in the private sector, people don't work as many hours as they used to. They don't love overtime like they used to, and it's tough. We need to get route options under control. We have a lot of parades that come in and want to have these routes that loop and cross I-DOT routes and railroad tracks. Those are very difficult. I was in East Moline when the marathon got blocked by a train. Not a good situation. You've got to avoid those types of situations. Parades are very dangerous. We love them, kids love them, but we have to admit, they are dangerous, and there's a lot of things that we have to take into consideration here. Terrorism, vehicle-borne attacks, and just frankly, accidents. People accidentally driving through a parade happens all over the country, and volunteers are critical for these. So the Special Events Committee approved limiting parades to a couple of different routes. I'm just going to show you here the routes that they agreed on was parade route number one, maximum of 100 floats, can go either direction, vibrant to 19th or the other direction. We could probably extend it to Bridge Point now that we own that property. But this is pretty good. There's a lot of public parking, there's a lot of staging opportunities. It only requires us to close River Drive. The other thing is, I hear this from business owners as well, they're like, "Yeah, we want to have great events downtown, but people have to be able to get to our businesses." And you seal them off from anybody getting there, that's not good for them either. So it's a challenge, a balancing act. So this River Drive route still is a lot of work. Maximum 100 floats, that we don't believe that we could get any more through there. We don't believe that Moline can really handle more than 100. Eight volunteers, 16 barricades, eight police officers, two paramedics, that's $2,400. So that's a lot of money for an event, and you also have to understand, if the routes are bigger than this, or they looped, if it was a double, you can double that cost. So we are trying to help the parade organizers with linear routes that don't loop, that don't cost them a lot of money. I mean, this is still a lot of money, but it's not exorbitant and unsustainable for them, right? Because we hear that all the time, "I can't, we can't afford that." And so we want to be able to try to manage that. We have a lot of interests, I shouldn't say a lot of interests, frequently interested people doing something on Fifth Avenue. Fifth Avenue is very difficult. How do we get rid of the cars that are parked down there? Do we tow them? How do we seal off all these businesses from there? How do we seal off all these businesses from from access? We really don't like this route, but we understand there may be times when they might be appropriate. So we want to limit it to 30, 30 floats, and you can see the route here. We still, so the problem with this too is that we have to block both sides of Fifth Avenue, right? A lot of, a lot of positions that have to be protected here. So I think I forgot to put the number, dollar amount in there. I think it's like 18, $1,800 maybe for this route. The Moline High School Parade is an anomaly. We've grandfathered this parade in because it is completely unique to other parades. Most other parade requests come in for a weekend, typically one a Friday, a Saturday, or a Sunday. This is a school event that happens during a school day. They let the kids out. And I mean, almost all the school staff works it. It's very well organized. It's been going on for a long time. And the other thing is, it is pretty much adjacent to the school, right? It stages in the high school. And then we get to 27th. We shorten this. We asked them to shorten this, to stop going over I-74. They used to go all the way to Wharton, if you remember right. And that's a long route. It's extremely long if it's 90 degrees and, you know, you're chugging all the way over there. So we we've got them down to 27, from the high school to 27, and then the red line. So this is not a great map, but the red line is cars or floats peel off and come back around, and the green arrow then is walkers that can then walk, navigate the kids back through the safe neighborhood, back to the high school. So this is a pretty unique one. We don't have anybody else asking for a Friday at 11 o'clock, but we have adequate staff. So this is the only one that we've kind of grandfathered into that. The other thing that Barry mentioned was festivals. These are very, very difficult because these are also soft targets. We have a lot of people gathering in a place. These are things that that give me a lot of anxiety. We have active shooter threats. We have bombing threats. We have vehicle borne attack threats. We have just general crime problems. Lot, lot of stress dealing with these on my part, but so we have the Distance Classic, the Car Show, the Mercado, Pride League, Motown Mile, Moline 150, Walk for Zero Suicide, Gabe's Gift, Porch Party, Moline Revisited, the Marchon. It's spelled, you see, I did this really quick, Barry. Marathon, Hunger Walk, Walk of Man, Crime Stopper Run, and the lighting. A lot of spelling errors, and then I apologized at this about 30 minutes ago. So we'll just move on. So and and I think as the, as we get out of COVID and and Moline becomes more and more vibrant, these could grow. So we have some recommendations that that we're going to be bringing forward to the committee and to obviously the council is the city is going to move towards a single point of contact, a city event manager. Right now, Macy is the event coordinator. She's kind of the administrative funnel, and then we're going to be working those into an event, city event manager. That'd be a memorandum of understanding. We really have to do something about the barricade problem. This is a challenge, and we hear this a lot from event organizers that they expect the city to provide this, and that's difficult. So we're going to have to look at contracting this out, but controlling the contract so we know that they execute the barricades. Because when we don't have barricades, and this is a very difficult position for the police department to be in, is when, and and I really need to try to find a way that my staff isn't having to make a decision five or 10 minutes before an event kicks off when the event is unsafe. Because it's not a great look for any of us, but it also is extremely dangerous, and it puts the city in a large amount of risk assumption to just trudge on through without the the proper safety protocols in place. We talked about creating an education platform, a pre-class or an online class that people need to take so that they get it, have the instruction, and then a pre-event meeting. Looking at maybe if we if we, especially if we do the barricades, we're going to have to raise these fees, in essence, to a deposit of the costs for police, medics, barricades, et cetera, public works costs. And then the the policy right now, and I will, I guess, admit we're not executing it like it's been designed, is for city council to approve lot and road closures. So I want you to think about this, and this is just an informational, I'm not asking you for any decisions tonight, but road closures are not a great idea. And I know, again, I'm the fun police, taking away what people want to do on and by closing the roads. But you have to understand that people are expecting to be able to drive on the road. And just think about, and I know you get this as Alderman, is you get, even though people complain about the streets, they complain about what? The construction and the detours of the streets. So it's like a no win situation for you, right? Is why is there, why are all these construction projects at once? I can't get to my house and the Imagine that for when the police are standing there and there's road closures. Or that 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 motorist who drives that route every day is not paying attention, and all of a sudden, there's a barricade. Right? Or unfortunately, that person that's drunk and goes the wrong route, wrong way down one way, just makes a turn, and next thing you know, they're plowing into pedestrians. Roads are meant for vehicular travel, bicycle travel. They're not meant for pedestrians. And when we put pedestrians there, it puts them in grave danger. We have to harden those roads. So you see what we've done at Mercado is we forced public parks basically to put quarter million dollar dump trucks to protect that. Now, they love it, and the pedestrians love it. I've been down there. Everybody's like, oh, I feel so safe. This is great. But it it's expensive, and it it's a challenge to execute. So we've got to continue to look at what options are available or getting them off the streets. But I would encourage you to steer away from road closures, if at all possible, because not only can you, is it difficult to close a road? You can't just throw up a sawhorse barricade. You've got to put arrowboards out. There's rules about road detour signs in advance and all these these construction rules about where the where the barricades are supposed to be and how far in advance they need to be notify of a road closure, probably public education about it. And I can only imagine the lawyers field day in a lawsuit when those things aren't executed to best practice. So, you know, my position is that we steer away from road closures. I know you've heard already in your terms about all the empty parking lots or all the spaces that we have in Moline that could be repurposed. We need to really look at that and try to find event space or or parking lots to get them into. We're moving the Moline 150 into the vibrant parking lot. That's going to be a lot safer. I didn't sleep for like four days in Moline 150, and that's going to be a lot safer because of the getting it off the road there. So those are some of the recommendations that we have. I know the team's here to support. I'll turn it back over to Barry if you have any questions.
Any thoughts from the council? I for sure want to say I very much appreciate you wanting to keep people safe, not only the community members, but our our staff that we know, you know, we don't want to lose anybody. And and so I really appreciate that. Also, the attention to wanting to keep the atmosphere positive, right? We want to work with event planners, and it has to be a two way street because of these major concerns that sounds like you're bringing. So I I think good answers take time, and I appreciate you taking the time to raise some of these questions with us so that we can get to some better answers, so you can sleep. Mr. Schmidt, I saw your hand.
Yeah. I I think that the move on the barricades makes a lot of sense because I think that probably isn't, it's very complicated, and I've seen executed poorly at events. I have physically had to get up and put a barricade up as just an attendee to prevent kids from getting run over before. So and I almost angrily texted you, and then thankfully did not, because I later found out it was not our job. So but I think that as, but that is what anyone else would think. Why would anyone think that's anyone but our responsibility? So I think, I understand it having to put that cost onto those partners, but us making sure we have the right contractors and then that they have the actual thing in place to make sure it gets done, I think is really important for safety and for the image, making sure citizens feel safe and know they are safe.
Ms. Castro.
I have a couple. One question. So the event organizers, do they pay the fees for the police officers and the paramedics to be at their events?
Yes.
So and then I've noticed too where some events will have the volunteers on site, but sometimes I feel like some of those volunteers haven't been like trained properly, or maybe there's just some, is there like a requirement for their their volunteers to have like any training as far as like safety or alcohol or anything like that?
So I might have to ask Annette about the alcohol. I think it's BACIT training. Yes. But, you know, no, to answer to your other part of your question, generally, no. We could probably look at that. I don't know what that would look like for liability purposes, but I and I'm not sure exactly what training they would need. Really, we're looking for them to kind of man that barricade so that it isn't moved, right? Or, you know, just some light direction to some, you know, crowd management. I didn't want to get into the weeds with with too much detail, but, you know, the best practice for a festival, for example, not necessarily a parade, but the best practice is one crowd manager for 250 attendees. So if you can imagine like during Mercado, that first weekend was 9,000 attendees. That would equate to 36 crowd managers. So you can see how like large events, some of it is just to funnel people if there's an emergency. We had the same issue with like Workfield House because the basketball team was so good this year. We had 5,000 plus. We had to work with them on, you know, got to have enough crowd managers here, even if just there's a, there's an evacuation for a weather event.
I know volunteers come from all over the Quad Cities for different organizations. On one hand, I can see a beautiful commitment to the community by going through a training of some sort, even if it's online. You can do it online as a group. We, you talked about that as a possibility for any organization just wanting to get the permit. And we do it for liquor licensees already. I think we we do some other online trainings as well. Well, you mentioned BACIT. But I I would speak in favor of continuing to foster an atmosphere of coming together to make the events good and to keep them going, right? By by doing community training in whatever form that looks like.
Yeah, like, for example, the runs, they have like a very tight knit community, like one run helps another run tight. It's like this unwritten rule that they have. So the five Ks are pretty light lift for us because most of them, they're, if they, even if they're trying to get one going, like, you know, Joe Moreno or his group are like, oh, we'll we'll help you, and they just know what to do. They're like, the runs usually are really well done because they they do them all the time. But to your point, some of the other ones aren't, when they're just trying to, let's throw together a celebration event, parade. It's difficult.
Is there anyone else? Yes, Mr. Mercedes.
Thank you. Well, I just want to thank you for putting all this together. A lot of times, the organizers probably have no idea what it all takes to keep us safe. So thank you for putting this out there and and yeah, and again, thank you for helping out in those times where the organizers aren't that well organized, and you've had to step in. So it is a balance, right, of keeping everybody safe and still having the place making and fun activities for our community. But thank you for
Yeah, I'll just close, close with this, not to get too far in the weeds, but just last week, Governor Pritzker signed a drone as a first responders bill, and so there will be some additional abilities for drones at public events. We're still working through some policy adjustments. We do have a drone available for that, but we're going to have to work through some of those. But that also could be an additional either expense or burden. We're going to have to work, work through some of that with the committees on when those need to be a a part of the plan.
Thank you so much.
All right.
We'll move to nine point two, Chapter Eight, Buildings and Other Construction and Building Services Amendments. Mr. Daley. Thanks for joining us this evening.
He's bringing gifts.
Oh, look at, yeah. What is in there? No boring meetings here.
So thank you for having me this evening to come talk about our codes and the building division. Currently, we are on the 2012 code cycle, which is actually three cycles beyond or behind being current. Current would be the 2021 cycle. What does that mean? It basically means that that we are missing out on a lot of progressive opportunities that would be there in the modern cycle that has to be, again, looked at a little more stringently because those opportunities aren't there for people. We started this process before I came here, that all the code officials had came together and started reviewing to bring up the Quad Cities as a whole to the 2021 cycle. That kind of went through the 2022 spring, and then the construction season started and it just kind of fell to the way. I started with the city in this position in October, and this was a strategic goal of the council, and even something that means a lot to myself, to move the city of Moline forward. And I grabbed the bull by the horns and re got the process going again. I took the notes that they had. I took it forward. I I also went to all our staff members and asked their input on each part of each each book of the code cycle to how their opinions are and what would work with them. It was kind of disappointing to me that some of the older members of my staff said they'd never been invited into the process before, you know, and those are the people that are out regulating it. Those are the people out working with the public, and they've never had that opportunity, which I, again, I appreciated their opinions. And from that was how I came to what our final amendments are. Another interesting thing was, and I was kind of excited about this, is that we had many amendments in the 2012. And you know what? Many of those amendments have been merged in by now to the 2021. So we were kind of a little bit ahead of our time even back then. So you'll see looking through it that a lot of the amendments have been deleted because they're there now, or we've got something even better in the book. The great thing, I'll start out talking a little bit about the IBC, the International Building Code, okay, is these books don't get smaller. Every code cycle, they only get bigger. Our 2012 was about two thirds this size, okay? So we've added a lot to this. And what kind of things do we add to it? Well, we added, again, better definitions to the occupancy, use of buildings, creating safer buildings and more flexibility. They talk about puzzle rooms in here. We didn't talk about puzzle rooms in 2012. It talks about microbreweries. Again, two, well, probably started to be written in 2010, 2011, approved in 2012. Nobody was talking about microbreweries. This book allows us to talk about microbreweries. It allows us to have a path forward to to regulate and to make those businesses safe and those buildings safe. It also talks about life safety, which is an important part of the code process. It improves and gives new paths forward to make sure that our buildings, our commercial buildings are safe. It increases embracing for buildings, okay? So that way, they're stronger. Stronger is going to be better, as we've seen in other buildings and other sad happenings throughout the world. Mass timber is something that's talked a lot about in this book, and we have some hopefully future developments that may be using some of that technology, that now it'll be easy for them to open the doors to use it because we are on the 2021 code cycle versus back at 2012. And of course, to one of my favorite friends over here is, it also talks about fire resistant ratings and assemblies and improvements on fire resistance to improve the safety of our buildings and and also the safety of our firefighters whenever they have to dash into those buildings to save each and every one of us. So those are some positives from this. As looking at some of the amendments, again, we talk about a little bit of a decreased time limitation in non-active permits. In other words, people that pull the permits, that now we want them to, if you're going to pull a permit, to get moving with it, that you don't pull a permit and wait a year before you potentially get the project started. We'd much rather have you wait and pull the permit when you're ready to start the work. We're talking about, again, there are some minor fee changes. And and most of the fee changes you're going to see are are small tweaks. Similar things that like rounding maybe even, again, up to now, if someone was going to have something of a valuation between 1 and 500, instead of it being $24, making it $25, okay? It's easier math to work with. The wrecking, the wrecking of an accessory building was $28. Instead, make it just even $30. It should, you know, again, it it's only a couple of dollars here or there. It should, you know, again, it, it's only a couple dollars here or there, but again, it will help overall for the department and also it will, again, make it easier for staff for rounding purposes, right, and calculation purposes. So that's where we, where we went with the IBC. And we're pretty excited about that because it's really going to help with commercial construction. Now, next, talk about the International Residential Code. That's this great big one here. And again, it's about a third bigger. What's great about this? This book is a prescriptive path for anybody to build. In other words, you don't have to have an architect, an engineer, if we use the pathways are in this book. They give us the charts, they give us the tables to be able to calculate so you can build safely. So that's why this book's a little bit bigger, but what it does is actually greater. The International Residential Code, again, there's an increase in tables and spans and loads for calculations, okay? In other words, it's going to make it easier for people to build in the future. Increasing information on wall bracing and footings. Again, that's what's supporting your house and also what's, what's helping the home keep it solid, right? So it's braced, solid, stays in place. It addresses, added to the code is solar energy. We didn't talk that much about that in 2012. We talk about in here, energy storage, stationary generators, stationary fuel cells, power systems. How about, in here, there's an actual section about tiny homes. In here, we talk about, I don't know how many of you know about straw bale homes.
Oh, yeah. I know someone who's gone on.
But we can talk about straw bale homes right here. And the other one that is what we're all going to be seeing in the future is, it also talks about 3D printed homes, okay? Are discussed in this book, okay? So again, it's bigger, but it's going to, it's a lot more opportunities. I'm not saying all these things maybe match our community perfectly, but having those options for the future, that, that's really where we want to be at. We also talk about alternatives in insulation, improvements to the thermal envelope, again, making our homes safer, warmer, more energy efficient. But we also have to think in there, how are we going to make it healthier, right? Because again, trapping it all in isn't the cure-all, we have to have kind of a balance of air movement to energy efficiency. And this book and the Energy Conservation Code also talks about that. We also talk about improvements to water-resistant barriers, right? Because how moisture gets into our home is what creates a lot of damage. And also improvements to veneer attachments. And under some of our amendments, again, we talk about a lot of similar ones to what we've talked about in the IBC. We, again, talk about how we, many of ours are also matching what others are doing in the community, that we all are kind of working as a whole. Because builders have a real hard time when one person legislates one way, and then they go across the river and it legislates another. And then, and that causes creation, causes confusion, and it also causes for there to be extra cost and problems and confusion. And that's never fair to anybody. So we, we try to work with everybody to make it that we have common sense approaches that we all can live with. We allow for some minor obstructions to handrails. Some of the interesting, we deleted the exception for exterior work requiring that there are smoke detectors on the interior of a property. In, in this code says that, hey, if you're just going to be working on the outside of your house, you don't have to worry about your smoke detectors. I'm sorry, I, I mean, I take smoke detectors pretty personally. I think every home needs to have smoke detectors. And so again, in here with fire, that we believe that, hey, if you're going to do work on your house, that we're going to ask that, you know, you, you should put smoke detectors in, you know, and make sure that your home is safe and that your family is safe. That, again, we, we talk about here, we've changed a few of the tables to make them simpler than, than what they have in here to kind of match to our geographic area, to meet our, our, again, our wind loads to our weather loads and such. And also talks about decks in here as a prescriptive path. And also another one that we are doing, we are eliminating 3/8 sheathing from roofs and floors. It was very popular back in the 60s, 70s, and I'll tell you what, all it is, is anybody of any size, you step on it, it cracks, it breaks, and, and it's not doing anybody any favors, so. That is the direction with this book where we're going. A few of the other interesting books and things is that originally swimming pools were a, what, 12-page section of the 2012? Swimming pools have their own book now to regulate and to tell us how to do those and to work with families, work with people. That the National Electric Code, the NEC, we have now places in there to work with solar charging stations, green energy. Again, Fuel Gas Code, changes to match the high efficiency units that are being put into businesses. The Plumbing Code and Energy Code, those are things that are regulated by the state. So we have to basically do what they tell us. If we want to change anything from that, we have to beg them for it, and again, they are not very receptive to change, so. But they have a good book, so, so they, they have something to stand on and something that we're very comfortable working with, to have safety and safe energy codes and safe plumbing codes for the city of Moline. Again, we made some minor modifications to the fee structure of, of some of the other disciplines, electrical, I made some minor fee changes. Before, a new single-family home, we had an application fee of $25 plus 5 cents per square foot for gross habitable floor areas. That would equal to about, for a normal 2,000-square-foot house, is in fees, $125. And we will go out there four to five times. That's not even in the ballpark of covering our costs to go out and inspect these homes. I asked to, to make it $50 and $10 a square foot, and that would generate $250 for a new home for electrical permit. And what would that be? That makes it about 50 bucks an inspection. That means at least our, our employee can drive out there and look at it and, and come back, and our costs are, you know, close, you know, we're close to recouping our cost, okay? So, so to me, I think that kind of made sense. A little bit with rental, that again, we were before $50 for the multifamily residence, okay, for the first unit, and then 25 for each additional. The first unit also compensated for the common areas. I said, let's make that $100 and then $50 for each additional one. Again, we're going to be going out there four times to five times to look at each one of these units and spending a half hour at each one. I mean, we're, we're just going to be, we'll be just getting our money back. Another probably very interesting one to show you how to kind of, oh, sorry. Our fees have not been changed since pre-1999. So this is the first time that anybody's looked at this. One of our oldest inspectors said that these have been the same since he started. Incidental units, wiring, let's say go wiring a furnace, a pool, air conditioner, we charge $17. How, I can't, how can you go in your car and get in your car and drive to the location for $17? I, I raised it to 25. Again, it, it, it may not cover everything perfectly, but it's going to definitely make it more in line. Same thing as whole-house generators, people and panels, $17 is what we charge for a permit. And again, I, I raised it up to 25 to, again, let's, let's see how it works, but at least it's a little more aligned than where we were. And you'll find that through most of my other ones also, so. Plumbing was similar, that was kind of, as the electrical, the, a plumbing new house, it's $30 for the permit, 15 for each, for your first two plumbing fixtures, and $15 for each one after that. I raised it to 30 and 15. This would generate fees of $150 for a two-bathroom new house. And so again, three inspections, that's about $50 apiece. So I, I mean, that's a lot more in line than with $75 for three inspections, so. So that's, that's where that came from. I don't know if it's perfect, but I think I've brought at least in the realm. Also, I did compare it to what other cities are charging. And we aren't, we aren't the cheapest anymore, but also we aren't the most expensive. So I think it just puts us in line with where we want to be at for 2000, where, for where we are now, where we were going into the 2021 votes. Like I said, I'm very excited for this. I, again, have been working on this for quite a while, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to bring this to you. And if anyone has any questions, I would be glad to hear them.
Questions from council? Mr. Schmidt?
First, I was just curious, looking at, you know, adopting the 2021 books. What is, I just don't, I don't know, so I'm asking, are those books released annually, every few years? Like, what is the appropriate cycle for us to be thinking about long-term to?
Well, and, and that is a great question, because it comes out every three years, okay? And so we are behind this three code cycles. The state of Illinois is looking to pass a legislation that says that if you're behind two potentially, that they will force you to take whatever they give you. This allows us to have amendments to it. So by us going to the 2021, because 2024 won't be out until, you know, yeah, 2024 or midway through it, allows us to get caught up, it allows us to, again, also not have to worry about that from being behind. And also, right now, we are the leaders. We're going to be number one, okay? We are the first ones to move forward with this, we are the first ones to, we're the ones that everybody's calling. Great, what, what's Moline doing, okay? What's Moline doing, okay? Because they, they, they want to, they want to see what we're doing. And that's, I'm excited for that.
Mr. Timmy?
Do, by staying up to date, does it unlock grant opportunities from HUD or anything like that?
Great one, back to why the state of Illinois is looking at this, it's because the state of Illinois is, if you are not caught up, if you're not up to date, the state of Illinois would have been able to, a peculiar year 20, Illinois submitted for $115 million in applications for, for aid, FEMA aid, but only received $680,000, less than 1% of the requested amount, because as a state, we are so far behind. And that's why they're pushing us, because you see the numbers. So that, that's why things are happening.
Okay.
And, and we're doing it for all those reasons and for the reasons that, that we're going to save for buildings, but it's going to lock a lot of options, okay, for, for our residents, it's going to lock options for developers. Like I said, it, it's going to be a lot easier for me when somebody walks in and puts those plans on my desk just to go, yes, than me to go, we have to figure this out or we need more information.
One second. I, I would really like to see the list of the comparisons that, that you mentioned. You said, we're not at the, we're not the cheapest, we're also not the most expensive. If, if you could share that with us.
Sure.
Before it comes onto regular meeting, that'd be great.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Schmidt? Oh, sorry, Mr. Masiest.
Thank you. You also mentioned we're first, people are calling first in the Quad Cities or?
Yes, first in the Quad Cities. I know, of course, Myland is, is taking our information and they're looking to mimic. I know Bettendorf here just about a month ago has asked me for our amendments, Rock Island asked me for our amendments, Silvas has asked me for our amendments and what we're doing with 2021. Davenport, I've been talking to their former building official, and of course, things have changed there, but yeah. I was in a little different situation because they are now in a state mandated codes, so their, their, their buildings, what, their IBC, IRC is being mandated, the residential building codes are being mandated by the state, kind of similar to how we are with our energy code and with our plumbing code. So they can adopt what the state tells them that they need to adopt or adopt something more stringent. These other municipalities are going, well, maybe if we jump on with you at 2021, we won't have to deal with the headaches of, of when the state moves to 2021 in the next three years. So by getting out front saves you all this work that I've been doing for the last seven months, to reading all these books, and you see all my little flags and, and everything else, to, to try to make sure that, that we have something good in the Quad Cities. Also, we have backing from the Association of General Contractors. They are very excited for what we're doing here.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
One that I had just a question on was the allowing for the minor obstruction in the handrail. So what is, what is the benefits of that? And it seems that that only applies in like limited residential applications, even in the, the IBC book, is that right?
Yeah, and, and you know what? That, that's a very interesting one, that's a good catch. It's the fact that though it is residential, you're right, you run into it more than anything else. But even having that little, okay, here you are, you're, you're walking down a handrail and all of a sudden, there's a windowsill that maybe projects out into it. Do you chop that windowsill out, right? Or do you take your hand and, you know, either you can grab that or grab onto your handrail? So, so that's kind of what the thought process is, is that maybe in some ways, it's not destroying the historic significance of, of a beautiful piece of trim work, but yet that, that's six inches, that most people's hands, that they can move over that six-inch obstruction. So that, that's where, that's where it came from.
Because when I read it in the IBC language, it seemed to say that was still only for residential applications.
Oh, and that, I'll, I'll take a look at that.
Can follow up with you?
I thought, yeah, that might have been me not cleaning up some language there.
Yeah, because that exception reads, handle within a dwelling or serving an individual dwelling unit.
And, and yeah, because it's mostly along lines of the historic preservation area is where you see it most, because most commercial buildings, it's a solid straight run, so. But thank you.
If there's no further feedback at this time, please email Mr. Daley with your questions so that when it does come back to us at a regular council meeting for first reading, it's in its best shape possible, based on your comments and questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. We will move to 9.3, Chapter 4, Alcoholic Liquor Amendments, License Fees. Ms. Kostopoulos?
Thank you, Mayor. So as you may know, liquor licenses are issued to licensees for the address of the establishment as applied for. So when a licensee decides to move, they actually have to reapply for a license. So recently, the mayor brought to our attention that perhaps this is not as supportive of businesses as we could be, and in fact, might be double, you know, charging licensees when they move during the term of their license, which is issued annually. So we have proposed an amendment to Chapter 4, as we'd like to do, which will waive that application fee as well as the license fee for those businesses that are. that application fee as well as the license fee for those businesses that are just simply moving from one location in Moline to another location in Moline. So we're open to questions on that, either now or as you think about that more, feel free to email us. As you know, we present these as informational to give you the opportunity to talk about it and give us feedback, and then we will come back with an ordinance amendment for your vote.
Mr. Timmy?
Is this anticipatory or a result of action? Like, has this happened?
It, it does happen, and not very frequently, but certainly it, it does arise, and we're looking to be more supportive of businesses here in the city and, and avoid that double charge.
Yes, Ms. Castro?
This is just a question because I don't, I don't know. Is this just for, like, restaurants who are serving alcohol, or would this be for taverns and bars or liquor stores?
It would be for anyone who has a liquor license in any category.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Are we required to take on an entirely new application, like by state law, or is it just by our own direction? Or could, could we put in place a slightly different process, or what's the merit to keeping it as it is with a to- whole new application?
Right. So we're, you know, we're certainly looking to ensure that any new application meets all of our requirements. So we are not required by state statute, although we, we believe that is a best practice.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
So it would be, it would be more difficult and more confusing to try and do a second or, or different process. It'd be easier to just say this is the process they already know, so they just have to do it an extra time, but we can waive those fees. That's the mindset.
Right. Yes.
Yeah, it has, it's really only about the fees versus the process.
Well, I was trying to think if there's a way we can make this easier, but I, as you said, Margaret, like, we want to make sure they're still checking off all those new boxes in the new place, and that's absolutely makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. We'll move to nine point four, chapter four, alcoholic liquor amendments, three A.M. liquor licenses. Ms. Kostopoulos?
Okay, this is a little bit more complicated. So as Chief has alluded to even tonight, the use of alcohol and potentially unsafe activity does seem to be on the rise here and everywhere. And we have seen that our surrounding communities are looking to curtail some of that unsafe behavior that occurs later in the evening or night or early hours of the morning as a result of bars and other liquor establishments being open until three A.M. We currently here in Moline, an establishment that desires a three A.M. license has to apply for it and pay an additional fee. It's what we call an option to add to their liquor license. We have looked at many ways to address this. We initially believed that we, it would be appropriate and reasonable to mirror many of our surrounding communities by amending our ordinance to require establishments to close at two A.M. You've probably seen that mistake in these status reports. So that was our initial thought was, well, if Rock Island is doing it, and Iowa's doing it, and it's Moline, and as Chief has shared with us, what is happening is people who are going to those establishments and other communities, when they close at two or a little bit earlier, they're coming to Moline to cap off the night. So we thought, well, we could address this concern by also closing at two. And the mayor reached out to licensees who have this three A.M. option and sought their input. And we really received a lot of concern from them, that they would lose substantial revenue as a result of cutting back those hours, and that we were urged to look at other options to address our concerns. The chief, as you may have read, did a survey of a number of other communities, some close by, some, you know, for instance, Scottsdale, Arizona, and, and that in conjunction with conversations from our meeting with license holders, we developed a list of conditions that could strike that appropriate balance between increasing safety measures to address concerns, but allowing establishments to remain open until three. So they primarily focus on a handful of conditions. Lighting, because as Barry will say, if you light things well enough, people will go away. You know, they, they'll be less likely to create problems. Security, we know that people, security personnel can prevent problems from happening, or at least address them quickly. So we have included conditions of security personnel in those later hours of operation. And those security personnel have to be trained, they have to know our code, they have to be prepared to call nine one one if an incident arises. And then thirdly, and we've heard this also from some of our licensees, that surveillance cameras often will, if not deter bad behavior, but capture what has happened if there is an incident, so that police can better enforce our laws. So we have surveillance cameras as a, a condition as well. And while some may be a little bit concerned about maybe overreaching with surveillance cameras, there are some built-in safeguards. For instance, they cannot record audio, because that could be actually eavesdropping. But we do now would require the recording to be preserved, to be available for the police, so that they can use it in investigating and prosecuting, should be maintained in good working order. Many of the problems that we have seen recently with establishments that do not maintain their cameras, we have identified here so that licensees are clear about their responsibilities. It's a, it's a comprehensive amendment, which we feel will provide greater safety and greater ability for police to investigate and enforce local and state laws.
Thank you, Ms. Kostopoulos. I'll add that this is an effort to ask those licensees to meet us in the middle, right? The, the police are already doing walkthroughs, they're already there, they answer quickly when called upon, et cetera. We need those businesses to meet us partway, so asking them to invest in what it takes to keep things safe or easily investigated if something went wrong, that's what this is about. If this doesn't work, then we'll need to look at two A.M. But this is trying to meet people halfway. Any questions for Ms. Kostopoulos? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I'm very supportive of what we're looking to accomplish and how we're moving forward. But there is one phrase that I think needs to be removed, that I'm not comfortable with in any way, shape or form. When it talks about the video recordings, it says that those recordings shall be made available by the licensee for inspection by the police department, local liquor control commissioner, or other authorized government personnel. I have no problem with those local authorities, but other authorized government personnel is scary and dangerous. I think it needs to be struck. It is the kind of thing that could be come in and used maliciously. It could be used to track down people by immigration and customs enforcement, it could be used to track down people seeking legal health care in the state of Illinois and establish their presence here for gender-affirming care or reproductive health options that may not be allowed in their states and that are being persecuted. If there are other local agencies we think need to be added to that list, I think we should enumerate them, and I'd have no problem with enumerating our local access, but I have concern with those out-of-state actors or overreaching actors. So I just want that phrase totally taken out, is my perspective.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Have you ever been in a bar at two o'clock in the morning? I don't think anybody's making much sense anyway. We're actually thinking about doing this, right? Stay in, have a bar, stay open until three A.M.
They currently do.
They already do.
They are now.
Yeah. That's the license holders who we had a conversation with, just as in two thousand twenty.
And we wanted to take it down to two, right?
Right.
That, that's where it started, but again, this is a meeting halfway, asking them to invest in the process, because we've already invested in the process through our police department.
Okay.
And we need, we need them to, to, to do more on their end if they want to have this extra time. So it, it's also an attempt to, in a sense, not punish the bar owners who, which usually, yeah, this is B tavern license, right, Margaret? Who are, who are not having problems, right? Not everyone is having problems. And so I'm comfortable with this step, but I'm also comfortable coming back to two A.M. if we really, really need it. Okay. Hearing for, no further comments. We'll look forward to that coming forward, Ms. Kostopoulos.
Thank you.
All right, on to nine point five, purchasing, chapter twenty-seven. Are you covering that? Oh, no, Mr. Heinley's right there.
There he is.
Greetings from afar.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, that's, I apologize that everyone has to look at my zoomed-in face. My name is Mark Heinley. I work with Margaret, and I occasionally work down in City Hall, across the hall from where you guys are sitting right now. And I have been working with some city officials on revamping the chapter twenty-seven of the city's code, which is your purchasing ordinance. And the impetus for this was, was sort of twofold. One is there, a general sense had developed that the city had introduced so many internal hurdles that you prevented yourselves from responding quickly and efficiently to needs as they arise, which, you know, in a city of your size can happen with some regularity. And so everything was centralized or is centralized through the city council. So any expenditure over fifteen thousand dollars requires board approval before the purchase can be made. And that's an approach that some communities take. Again, a sense had emerged that the threshold was, I guess, artificially low and lower than many of your surrounding communities, and you were introducing obstacles to city staff and city officials addressing the needs as they arose in a way that certainly was protective of city finances, but we were tasked with examining the framework to see if there was a way we could balance some decentralization for the sake of efficiency without being wildly out of step with the common practices of other communities, and while still maintaining sufficient oversight and control so that a decentralized purchasing authority wasn't abused. So we put together some amendments that hopefully are sitting in front of you or on your screens, and you may have had a chance to review those. I also prepared sort of a high-level summary that didn't attempt to get too granular, except perhaps if there's questions tonight. But, so in the main, your setup currently is that any expenditure over fifteen thousand dollars comes to you as a city council for approval before it can be done. Up to that fifteen thousand dollar limit, the city administrator has authority, and he can parcel out that authority and designate other people to share in that authority in his discretion. He has fairly broad authority to do that, but anything above this fifteen thousand dollar level was coming to you guys. I'm frankly not sure when that number was originally written. It may have made more sense when it was written. At this point, I think there is a sense that that is tripped very frequently, and you're being positioned to do perhaps more micromanaging than, than you care to, or that may make sense for a city of your size. So in addition to that fifteen thousand dollar trigger for things to come to the council, you guys had also required competitive sealed bidding in a number of circumstances that aren't otherwise required by state law, and that is certainly your prerogative to do so as a home rule community. And as a general matter, I also want to remind everyone that whatever is codified in terms of controlling your purchasing authority and the procedures are minimums. So it is always the case that competitive solicitations can be sought, you know, more procedures can always be introduced, but the fact that competitive bidding was being required for things like supplies that aren't, isn't required by state law to be done in that fashion was, again, introducing some extra self-imposed hurdles. And there may be historical reasons or even current reasons why you want to see some of those remain, but at least subject to our discussion and any feedback we get, what we prepared was an overhaul, that once whatever iteration of this is codified, I will note, we are going to prepare a purchasing manual that tracks whatever is codified. I will note, we are going to prepare a purchasing manual that tracks whatever is codified so that your city staff and officials will know as a practical matter how to implement, um, you know, will have a ready access to understanding what their authority is, what the procedures are. Because of course, anything codified in your codebook is only useful to the extent that it's broadly understood. So I'll note that. In order to accomplish the changes I'm going to talk about, we, um, added a few additional, uh, modifications and additional definitions that we thought, um, it helped to make the code a little more user-friendly. Of particular note, we tracked the state law in, in how the state defines, um, public works. So when I refer to public works or if we talk about it tonight, I don't mean unless they otherwise specify this, uh, something that would be handled by your public works department, although that's frequently the case. What I really mean is the technical definition of public works that the state uses that triggers competitive bidding is any construction or demolition work, uh, on a fixed public work. So these are capital things, the construction of a building, the roadwork, um, bridge work, uh, utilities, uh, things of that nature, um, utilities, there's some slightly different rules around. But that's, that's what I mean by public work. So we redefined this to track, um, the, the state's, uh, definitions. And what we did, the most notable thing that we did was we looked at the purchasing thresholds and introduced a series of new tiers with gradually, uh, increasing authority. So our first tier of expenditure is expenses up to $5,000. And as proposed, a supervisory level employee would have the authorization to make such a purchase, up to $5,000. They, um, I'll talk about procedures in a minute, but in terms of authority, they don't require, as proposed, any additional feedback, any additional sign-offs. They recognize the need, up to $5,000, they can address the need by making a purchase. Of course, I'll note, for any of these levels, everyone is still bound by appropriations ordinance. Um, no one is authorized to blow a departmental budget or make, um, expenditures that the council has not authorized in terms of funding levels. So that, you know, is covering the background. All purchases, of course, are, uh, reported to the council on a monthly basis. I believe your finance director, uh, prepares that sort of report right now, and that's what's envisioned to continue so that there is an opportunity, uh, for you guys to have relatively real-time oversight over what's going on. The next step up in thresholds is expenditures between $5,000 and $15,000. And those, as proposed, would be able to be authorized by a department director. The head of a department could make, uh, authorize expenditures up to $15,000 and would have signing authority to do that, to sign a contract, to, uh, sign a purchase order, to effectuate a purchase up to $15,000. Once you get beyond that level, we introduced a sort of two-tier oversight method of monitoring purchases. So between $15,000 and $25,000, the department director would have authority, but only subject to the advance approval of the administrator. So if a need comes up, it's a $20,000 need, uh, before they can make that purchase, they have to go talk to, to Bob, get, sign off from the city administrator, uh, for that particular expense. And then, armed with that authority, the department director can make such a expenditure. Then the broadest category in terms of financial range is our tier from $25,000 to $100,000. And in this tier, we have proposed a joint authorization scheme that always requires the finance director to sign off, meaning the finance director is going to make sure that the funds are in place and it's, uh, been appropriated and budgeted for, uh, that the resources are practically available. And so the finance director has to sign off. Along with the finance director's sign-off, it will depend a little bit by the type of expenditure, but generally, the default person would be the administrator. The city administrator would have to sign off along with the finance director once you climb above $25,000. So they both are required to approve such expenditures. If it is an engineering-specific project, we indicated that the director of engineering, along with the finance director, could authorize and sign off on those, uh, projects or supplies, uh, or whatever the purchase was. And in the utility context, in, um, Tony's domain, uh, the director of utilities, uh, along with the finance director, would have to approve those purchases. And then anything escalating, uh, above $100,000 would require council approval. So I recognize those are significant jumps over the current, uh, the current framework, which calls for your weighing in in advance, uh, for anything above $15,000. So in discussions with, uh, staff and officials, we thought this was appropriate to propose. But I will also note that it is, of course, subject to your comfort level with, um, that level of delegation and your comfort level with the number of oversight steps that are introduced with the joint authorizations. So we circle back to that. I trust that that is going to be the most interesting thing that we talk about. I will say we also codified some procedures for what has to happen for those purchases to take place. So not just who is authorized to make them, but what they have to do before they make those. And again, it's an escalating tier. As the dollars climb, the more formal, uh, things need to be undertaken and the more competition needs to be sought. So up to $2,500, there's no quotes at all required. You can, uh, somebody could pick up the phone or go to the first vendor. And if they price seems okay, there's no codified reason they have to play multiple vendors off one another. Again, of course, they always could do so. Uh, once you get to the $2,500 threshold, between that and $5,000, uh, three quotes are required. You don't need to advertise for the quotes, and the quotes could be oral. But you do have to get at least three, um, competing quotes before authorizing an expenditure. Between $5,000 and $15,000, it's proposed that three quotes would have to be obtained in writing. And that the solicitation for those proposals, uh, would have to detail, you know, all of the applicable legal requirements, um, that might apply, whether it's prevailing wage act or perhaps there is some, um, uh, you know, responsible bidder ordinance, uh, triggered or, or some, um, focus on equal opportunity, you know, whatever it might be that would be required. Um, in fact, that, that extends from $5,000 all the way up to $25,000. Once you get beyond $25,000, if it's not a project that requires competitive field bids, five written competing, um, quotes would need to be obtained. And of course, in the context of a public work exceeding $25,000, that requires all the formality that any competitive sealed bidding currently requires, um, in terms of bid specs being advertised publicly, uh, being held open for a sufficient amount of time to gin up competition, and then, you know, a formal bid opening, tabulation, and award. With the only tweak to that process is that we have directed it all bids be opened by the city clerk's office. Uh, currently, I think engineering opens up their bids and the clerk opens up most of the others. Uh, we thought it was important to introduce consistency and a single, um, person in charge of overseeing that process to make sure there's no surprises for contractors and that deadlines are being enforced in the same manner across all departments, things of that nature. There are some other changes here, we're, it gets increasingly granular. Um, I'll just note a couple of things in passing. We provided a procedure that would liberalize a little bit the situations in which you guys could extend a contract. Currently, a contract can only be extended if everything, including the price of the service, is the same. And as a practical matter, we were hearing feedback that that is really never the case. Prices go up over time. And so as a practical matter, really, no one was able to extend a contract out for another year if something had been functioning well. And it would have to be resolicited and all the procedures and slowdowns that that entailed. So as proposed, contract extensions of up to whatever the base term of the contract was, or five years, could happen if the terms are the same, but subject to an inflation escalator. So it recognizes that costs change over time. And as long as they don't jump beyond what inflation would suggest they should have increased by, um, that, subject to the, uh, purchasing thresholds we discussed earlier, a contract, um, up to a person's purchasing authority could be extended, again, without, um, uh, without additional procedures as long as, uh, there was no, um, increase beyond the inflation rate or any other change in, in material terms. That's a lot, and that is about it. I'm sure there are other details, and, uh, perhaps the best way to handle those would be in response to questions or comments or criticisms or, you know, whatever it may be. So with that general overview, uh, you know, I'd welcome any feedback because we have largely engaged this process on a staff and city official level. But, you know, really, we, we brought a, um, proposed finished draft to you guys. So, you know, I'm, I'm very curious to, to hear the reception.
Thank you, Mr. Heinley. Uh, questions from the council at this point? Concerns?
Yeah, I, I had two that came up. Uh, one is looking at the, in the $25,000 to $100,000 range, talking about five, and I'm reading this from the memo, not necessarily from the, uh, proposed ordinance, five written quotes solicited by public advertising are required. When that is happening, would the city administrator or their designated person doing that work also be able to reach out to get people to apply in addition to that adverti- I'm just trying to understand what that process is and how it differs from that regular bidding process? Because if we just, like, put it out publicly and only got three responses back, is it, you know, we can't buy it?
Yes, that is interesting. I'm going to circle back to your last question so I can buy a little bit of time to think about how to answer it. But as to the first part of your question, um, it is contemplated that, uh, in whatever form a written solicitation went out, that additional outreach could take place, whatever that looked like, reaching out to some of you. No, a past contractor that's worked on a similar project, um, you know, uh, running something in a trade journal, you know, whatever it might be. In a competitive bidding context, you are hamstrung. Of course, everyone is entitled to get the exact same information in the exact same way. And so we generally advise against sort of off-book side solicitations. But in the context of, uh, of a, a purchase over $25,000 that didn't trigger competitive bidding, so what we might be talking about is, um, uh, a purchase of a vehicle, for example. And maybe your, the police department is looking for a, a vehicle that would cost, you know, $40,000, $50,000. It's not a public work in the, in the sense that the state would require public, uh, competitive bidding in that context. So this lays out the process, uh, by which the, uh, police department, in my hypothetical, would, would seek, um, to ensure that they had at least five people and five entities in the derby, uh, competing for the business. As to your final remark, which is a good point and well-taken, what if the city engages all of these procedures and there's just a lack of interest? Surely it cannot mean that, uh, a lack of market interest means you cannot make the purchase. So I do think, as I'm thinking about this now, we will probably need to insert some language to make this clear. But from my perspective, as long as the city adheres to, um, the appropriate procedures dictated by the amount of the expenditure, you can't control the response rate and shouldn't be punished for a lack of interest so long as there was an earnest attempt adhering to the various procedures we put in place to make sure that those situations are rare where there wouldn't be interest.
Thank you. Mr. Schmitt?
Yeah, I, I can add to that as, as well, Mark. Yeah, my experiences in other cities across the land is that, um, when those circumstances do arise and you have followed all of the policies and procedures in, in the ordinance as well as in the manual, that at that point, you have the ability then to go ahead and proceed with the procurement locally or otherwise in order to obtain what's necessary, still with the necessary approvals in place, of course. You can dispense them with a second bid, for example. You don't have to go back out. That's the kind of laying we generally look for.
Okay, thank you. I was curious, when did the $15,000 threshold go into place originally? How long have we been functioning under that, um, threshold?
I don't know.
You can follow up with us. Margaret, if you can follow up on that.
Yes, you will have to, you will hear a lot of paper shuffling. I will, uh, if you'll, uh, if you'll forgive me, I'll mute myself when I find the answer. If we're still on topic, I will, uh, wait for appropriate moment to blurt out the answer. I will say the purchasing ordinance in general has been revisited a handful of times over the years in certain targeted ways, not really in a comprehensive way. So each time that happens, we get a new date on the purchasing ordinance. So I know, for example, you guys introduced some responsible bidding, uh, requirements, I think within the last year or two. So, uh, that is what the chapter has updated to. But I will see if I can find the answer quickly and way back in.
Thank you. Uh, anytime, I can take it by email as well. And then I was curious, um, especially from our director of finance's perspective, right? If these are the kinds of thresholds you had, the what is proposed over in Bettendorf or, you know, how similar this is to how other, our neighbors are functioning?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I would say it is very comparable to other communities. And what is very helpful is our current budget process, that our directors are very good at detailing, um, purchases to be made. We have like a level text is what we call it within our budgeting module of our software. And if we clearly identify that there is a purchase on the horizon and it's within horizon, you know, within the parameters, it can really speed the process along because the council will have already seen that during the budget process.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any further questions, Mr. Schmitt?
Looking at the, uh, the inflation adjustment on the contracts, I thi- I think that makes sense to allow for a little growth in that price on that renewal. However, I would want to see a cap in place. I think I would want to see no more than 3% or, or even lower if that's advisable. I'd be curious as to, to know what that perspective is from the staff and their professional opinion on that. But, um, I wouldn't want to just have it be so that if we have a high inflation year that a contractor just reads our ordinance and says, "I could automatically get seven more percent out of the city of Moline." If, if we're getting that big of an increase even from an inflation-caused year, I think that's a better opportunity for us to take advantage of rebidding.
Thank you for making that point. All right, if there's nothing further, we'll go to our last informational, uh, 9.6, purchasing card policy, Mr. Heinley.
Thank you. Uh, this one is simpler to discuss. The idea is, um, and Carol, your finance director, um, really took the lead in authoring this, so, uh, please jump in if I, if I misspeak or mischaracterize something. But, um, this provides, uh, first of all, whatever is codified in your purchasing ordinance, whether we leave it alone, whether we, uh, update it in the fashion described tonight or, or somewhere in between, that will remain the rules of the road for purchasing in terms of who can do it, the procedures that need to be undertaken in order to make a purchase. The purchasing card, um, policy is simply the practical way of implementing, uh, those purchases, particularly, I think we would be talking about situations particularly, I think we would be talking about situations where very low dollar amounts. And the idea is, currently, anytime someone is looking to make a purchase beyond whatever authorization they need to undergo, they have to physically make a check request or request petty cash. And this policy is just an attempt to recognize that we are operating in a digital world with, you know, credit cards are, I think, probably in our personal lives as well, the primary mode of purchase. So this would allow department heads to determine who within their department was an appropriate recipient of a purchasing card. That might mean no one, that might mean lots of people. Everyone, by, on a departmental basis, it may differ what their needs are and how often it should be triggered. In addition, department heads would be given discretion to set several sets of limits on purchasing. And it does not have to be uniform. One employee might have one limit, and a higher-level employee may have a different limit. But those purchasing limits would both go to how much could be spent in a particular transaction and how much could be spent by a particular employee on a rolling monthly basis. The nice thing about this arrangement, as it's proposed, is there are a number of external checks and balances built into the system or that would be built into the system in terms, even from a merchant perspective, in terms of what types of authorizations, what types of expenditures could be made with these cards. So specifically, and I'll confess to not having much personal experience with this, but there is a concept called a merchant category code. And vendors and stores are categorized by what they mainly do. So I'm going to make something up. Ace Hardware is obviously a hardware store, Jewel is a grocery store, so they're categorized in that manner. And when a card is used and is run by the merchants through a point-of-sale terminal, it both runs an automatic check through the card issuer that verifies that the person whose card is being presented is within the financial limits of what they're allowed to purchase and within the category limit, or, I'm sorry, within the type of expenditure. I'm struggling a little bit to come with a good hypothetical, so forgive me if this is off the wall. But if I'm in the, if I'm an employee in the engineering department and I have, and I have a purchase card and I'm authorized to spend up to $100, and I've gone through whatever approvals I need to get to, if I run that card at a liquor store, it is very likely, if the system is operating the way that it should, that the merchant itself will get a decline message on the card, because that's not the type of store that was reasonably expected by this merchant coding process to be the type of place where I am supposed to be running my card. So that is another external check and balance. And then at the end of each month, all of the statements come in. They have to be trued up by department heads or their designees against all of the receipts, which must be maintained, receipts or invoices, purchase orders, anything. There's got to be a paper trail for all of the purchases. And there are some checks and balances built in where if someone exceeds their authority, it can be, obviously, an employee discipline issue. But there are also opportunities and windows of time to dispute an unauthorized charge that may have been made. And of course, that would also extend to any sort of compromise, you know, if somebody has hacked into the system. I know our own firm has a credit card system that's not unlike this. And, you know, it's from time to time, we get messages that the card is being changed because someone has obtained the information illicitly or whatever. And so, so there is a dispute period for that sort of thing as well. So anyway, this is generally in response to sort of a sense that there was kind of an outmoded program where people were having to make petty cash requests, making check requests. There's, you know, some time elements to that. It's probably not the most efficient use of resources. And so, we thought that this could expedite and facilitate appropriate purchasing. So this is what Carol came up with with our, with Legal's oversight.
Thank you very much. Any questions or concerns from the council? Yes, Mr. Macias?
Thank you. So it says that purchases in excess of $50 would require an authorization. What does that look like? Do they have to wait there to get authorization at the point-of-sale?
So that, the answer is yes, but that doesn't mean that they are picking up the phone and calling Administrator Vitas. It means that they are running the card in the same way that when I run a credit card, it goes through a, it's accepted or declined. In my case, it's just about whether or not there's sufficient funds in, on hand to pay the bill. In this case, there's that additional layer I talked about where the card issuer, and they do this electronically, so it happens very seamlessly and quickly. But they verify that I have purchasing authority up to the amount that is being sought and I haven't spent too much in a month, so that I'm out of credit effectively. And again, that it's, the merchant is of the sort or category that, I guess, my department had reasonably expected me to be running a card in.
Well, I'm just curious, somebody goes on a conference and they charge $100 for, I don't know, just gas or whatever. Is that something, is there a dashboard or something that the administrator here basically sets the limits higher? I'm curious how that works.
You mean for approval?
For approval. Right, I don't want to be approving things like that.
Yeah, I know, it just sounds like very strict.
We don't want to make it so restrictive.
Yes, let's, Ms. Barnes, answer.
And I might add, Mark and I have been back on this a couple of different times, but I should, first of all, clarify that we are improving a policy that has been in place actually since 2008. It's been working very, very well, it's gone through multiple audits. Our whole P-card system's working great. So in answer of your question, the limit that we would have on a travel, if you were going out of town, your administrator or, like, Macy or Bob would make sure that your card would cover what the anticipated costs are.
It's like you have credit limits.
Yes. The main thing where we have some internal control is that we have employees that might be just running down, they need a tool or something like that. Their limits might be very, very low, and if they go over it, it will ding. But if it's still within a spending category, they can go ahead and approve it. But when they come back, the supervisors, we will all review that, that it was a proper purchase.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Vitas?
Carol, just so I know, because I know you and I have not had a chance to really get it, dig into this discussion. The limits that are on all of the cards now, which are approved, and they vary based upon the position, whether it's a director or whether it's an executive coordinator, myself, yourself. You know, are those limits being changed as a result of this?
No, no. Those limits are the same as what had been in place.
The limits remain the same. The limits remain the same. However, to use Alderperson Macias's example, where he had a situation where an employee, you know, flight was canceled and had to get a room for tonight. And that room was $349. Would this card still work if they had a P-card and they were out of state? What would happen in those circumstances so they wouldn't be stranded without a room?
Yeah, it should normally on a, like you said...
Because I don't get a call from somebody on a Saturday night at 11 o'clock, they're stuck somewhere.
Absolutely not. What we do is there's some pre-authorized setup. So if you're going on a particular trip, and we know, like, we may give you $5,000, knowing that you're really only going to be spending $2,000. And we only give cards to very responsible, I'm not saying people aren't responsible. We're very careful, we don't just give them out to everyone.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Carol.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'm going to close out the committee of the whole and call a regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please, to stretch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation of the ground invisible with a routine justice for all.
Invocation, Mr. Timian?
No, Your Honor.
All right, roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole, Council and Executive Session minutes of June 6, 2023, Council Special Meeting minutes of June 12, 2023, and Council Minutes of June 13, 2023. Second reading ordinances. Item number 15.1, an ordinance amending Chapter 22, offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 22 in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new Chapter 22 dealing with the same subject matter. Item 15.2, an ordinance amending Chapter 26, police of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 26 in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new Chapter 26 dealing with the same subject matter. Item number 15.3, an ordinance approving the tax increment redevelopment plan and project for the Eastgate Tiff redevelopment project area. Item number 15.4, an ordinance designating the Eastgate Tiff redevelopment project area. Item number 15.5, an ordinance adopting tax increment financing for the Eastgate Tiff redevelopment project area. Resolutions. Item number 16.1, a resolution approving a final payment number six and change order number one, final payment with Miller Trucking and Excavating for project number 1407, transmission water main from Moline to Silvis in the amount of $87,256.23. With the change order, project still came in under budget at $1,646,089.23. Item number 16.2, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Central Excavating Incorporated for project number 1421, 1,000 block of 43rd Avenue Water Main Extension in the amount of $104,450. Item number 16.3, a resolution authorizing the director of engineering to execute an agreement with IMAG Corporation to complete engineering services for a new retaining wall at 70th Street and John Deere Parkway in accordance with the detailed scope of work included.
Your Honor, I move for the approval of consent agenda.
Second?
Motion by Alderperson O'Brien, seconded by Timian. Roll call, please. Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number 18.1, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Five Cities Construction Company for project number 1416, 2023 alley reconstructions for an amount of $314,347.40.
Move to approve?
Motion by Alderperson Macias. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Timian. Discussion, Mr. Schmidt?
I had a question because this project was going into the CIP reserves. And I'm not sure if David or Carol were speaking on it, but I just wanted to have what the, where our reserves are standing at right now, if we have any concerns about dipping into them at this time.
Carol, please come to the microphone.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had updated all of our reserve balances prior to the roundtable last week. And in the CIP plan, which is where these alley purchases would be taken from, we currently have a fund balance of over $4.1 million. And we do anticipate with the current spending in '23, however, hopeful to bring it down close to $600,000, but there's usually a little bit of a lag. So from a cash flow standpoint, even at the $600,000, we would still have a balance to pull from. But there are ample reserves to pay for that.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
So is that reserve then just all unspent money from the CIP plan? Or is that as, because I guess when we say a CIP reserve, I imagine that as like a set-aside item. But if we're spending down that much money, that does not sound like what that is.
So maybe I'm not saying it clearly, I apologize. We had a carryover in total fund balance of $4.1 million from last year.
So things that didn't get accomplished for whatever reason?
Yes.
Okay.
Within that, we have a fund balance policy where we try to maintain a minimum of $600,000, that it never, that is, it's not identified for projects. It's not scheduled. So within that, there's still ample room to add another project. And as we bid projects, some come in high and some come in low. Historically, we should have ample funds to fund that project.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was...
Thank you so much. There's nothing further? Roll call, please. Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
The ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. The first reading ordinances. Item number 19.1, an ordinance amending Chapter 4, alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, increasing the number of Class B licenses in the city at the request of Alexis Nelson, potential purchaser of the former Casey's Tavern, 1512 15th Street, Moline. And that is all I have this evening. Unless there's discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we do need to do the vote on advance to second reading.
Yep, sorry about that.
If there's a motion?
Your Honor, I propose a motion to advance 19.1 to a second reading.
Second.
That's by Timian and Macias. Any discussion?
Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Nay.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay, and that advances to second reading. Okay, thank you. All right, we're to miscellaneous business. We do have executive session tonight, so I'm going to be as brief as possible. Basically, I've left the flyer for this coming Sunday's Good Gathering, which we are trying to move to a second phase, this effort. I have you, I've noted my mayoral pillar of connectedness, right? In our, in our community, we are an ever-changing community demographically, and it's good for us to know our neighbors. And we come together around a model espoused by the People's Supper. And so, we have, we have guidelines for how these experiences go. Some of you have been there. There is a public Facebook group called Good Gatherings that announces all the dates. And I have started an advisory committee of people who want to continue to work on this issue of connectedness and fighting social isolation and loneliness, pre and post pandemic. So that's the ad. I've got extra copies if you can share with anybody that's interested. It's Sunday at 5:00 to 7:00 in Millennium Park, the first outdoor one and the first where we're saying, yes, kids are welcome. So there'll be discussion and good food and learning from one another. And that is all I have at the moment. Actually, I have one more thing. So I, as you know, I was at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and I joined the inaugural Asian-American Mayor's Alliance that they started. We did not have a group of that, and it's a very interesting alliance because all of us seem to be some combination of Asian and something else. And you know that I'm Asian Indian and, and white. But an interesting outcome of that is that I was invited to be a part of a welcoming ceremony at the White House for Prime Minister Modi of India. And given that Moline is the home of John Deere, and we have a major, that company has major operations in India, I thought it was appropriate to go. And I'm rolling in, paid, much of it myself. But also, I am building in some more work on efforts we have related to the Spiegel Building and some contacts I made last year. So I will be doing some city work, but I'll just be gone Wednesday into Friday. So it should be interesting. It's, it's an exciting time, apparently. Debbie, I mean, Alderperson Murphy, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Macias?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Razak?
No, thanks.
Oh, thanks.
Mr. Timian?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to extend appreciation to this body and the city for hosting the Pride Festival this last weekend. It was a great event. I would argue it was twice the size as the year before, and the attendance was, was great. So it says a lot about a city that we can put on events like this without controversy and that this council is supportive of it. So just thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timian.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Finch? Mr. O'Brien?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Castro?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Vitas?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Anyone else from staff? Okay. With that, we move to executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Five ILS, ILCS, 120 slash 2C1.
Second?
All right, motion by Elder Person Murphy, seconded by Timian. Roll call, please. Elder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
All right, we're moving into executive session. Oh, we have another session. Go ahead.
Property acquisition dash five ILCS 120 slash 2C5.
Second.
Thank you. Elder Person Murphy, seconded by Timian. Roll call, please. Elder Person, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
The ayes and nays. All right, there we go.